Sure. Come on up, come on down. Are we sure?
We're sitting next to you.
Yeah, if you'd like, yes.
Absolutely be a remote meeting moving forward, and I would agree with that.
Before actually let me start just to try and keep things in some semblance of order. And we did have a public hearing scheduled to begin at 1:30, which we. That's what I would have a motion on the record.
I would make a motion to postpone the public hearing. To consider supplemental budget and amendments for 2021 until next week.
Can you do it till next week, or do we have to re-advertise it?
No, good question.
Things for postponing it, you're actually, you opened the meeting, did you not? I was out of the room.
We didn't. No, I mean, the meeting was never closed.
No, no, the public hearing, you gotta open the public.
Oh, that's true, I can open the public hearing.
Announcement.
Actually, I'll do that, and then we continue, then we would need to re-advertise. No, it doesn't matter, you just can't, you can, you can have a public hearing after the scheduled time, you just cannot have it.
Right.
Or, so you can go later.
As long as there's no legal jeopardy there.
No, there shouldn't be, so I will.
Are continued and postponed.
Okay, yeah. So I will open the public hearing to consider a supplemental budget and amendments for the 2021 budget for various funds and departments in the sum of $602,385. And at that, it's a hearing any interested taxpayer may appear or be heard for or against proposed supplemental budget appropriations. And now I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until next Tuesday at 1:30.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone and continue this public hearing on the supplemental budget and amendments until next Tuesday at 1:30.
Second motion. Okay, I have a motion to say to continue postpone the public hearing, any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay. Director King.
Thank you, Jeff, for bearing with us.
You're welcome. So, yes, good afternoon. I'm here to present the County Department of Emergency Management Structure Review Panel's presentation. The Department of Emergency Management Structure Review Panel made up of myself, the Human Resources Director, the Human Resources Manager, the Union Shop Steward, another Communications Officer, the local union president, and the regional union representative. Met multiple times over the last three months. Each of us gathered pertinent information regarding this review and presented it to the panel for discussion and preparation for this presentation and recommendations to you. The information gathered and our discussions have led us to agree that what is needed is a holistic approach to the department's structure and staffing changes to set up the department for long-term success and our mission to provide services to all of our county residents and visitors, local and state law enforcement, emergency medical services, fire districts and departments, and other users across the county to provide for the public safety. In summary, the panel, after looking into different structures and staffing models for not only 911 dispatch supervisory staff, proper communications officers, shift coverage, but also emergency management program work staffing, analysts recommending a hybrid of the original new Department of Emergency Management Structure recommendation that was provided in 2011 by the Public Safety Advisory Board appointed by the Board of Commissioners and the current jail structure and staffing model. Budgets indicate, or budget estimates indicate that this new structure and staffing recommendation will be offset by savings in overtime due to less extra shift coverage or vacations and other leave, any training of the communications officers, training of new hires, and the cost of the hiring process. The factors that were considered by the panel, the history of the DM structure, as I mentioned before, the original recommendation and what was done and what the department has continued in for the last nine years. Review of comparable agency structures, including three primary functions of KCDM, which is 911 dispatch, public safety radio system, operation and maintenance, and the emergency management program, or that equivalent with multiple staff on duty. Finding comparables for our department was a bit of a challenge because it entails those three primary functions. And don't find that. But we did our best to find agencies that were similar, as well as agencies that had both functions under the same, at least under the same agency, but maybe under different management.
I can step in with a question?
Yes.
You know me, I never like to wait till the end. Would the promoting one supervisor, promoting one communications officer allow them to cover overtime and not stick it all on lower level staff?
Jump right to our recommendations, yes, sir.
Oh, did I move on too fast for you?
No, not too fast for me at all. Yes, if you look at the the second bullet under the third bullet point, both of those positions would be required to be able to perform the duties of the communications officer, as well as the chief of operations. So all personnel in the 911 dispatch function from the chief of ops down would be required to be able to perform the certified and qualified to perform the duty of the communications officer.
It's rolling it to you to make sure they step in there and alleviate some of that.
Yes, sir. Anything else before I go back to where I left on?
You're good.
That's okay, yep. No, I understand your weight. I'm here to give you the information that you need to make the decision that you have to make. Okay, next bullet point, top of the second page. DM's ability, the other consideration by the panel was DM's ability to maintain staffing for 911 call taking. Emergency radio dispatching and emergency management program activities properly provide for public safety, which includes the day-to-day 911 call taking and dispatching, as well as the emergent response for major emergencies after the emergency management programs. Another factor was the growth of the county, which included increase in the 911 call volume, but more importantly, the increase in individual 911 call severity and the length of time spent on each call. That more than the number of calls we get right now, the severity of those calls, domestic violence and mental health calls, and the length of time that it takes to to work through individual calls of those natures, ever increasing, more complex, and more of a mental and psychological impact to our staff. Also considered was the increase in frequency and severity of the natural and man-made disasters for the EM program as the last several years of wildfires and the pandemic have shown us. Also, the increase in state and federally mandated requirements for 911 call taking and the emergency management program. The legal court paperwork, data entry and tracking performed by the communications officers, which was transferred from the sheriff's office to the Department of Emergency Management because it required a 24/7, 365 staffing to be available to have access and deal with that paperwork. And the next consideration was retention issues related to overtime, overtasking, and other employment opportunities, which leads to the perpetual cycle of burnout and staff replacement, which adds to the overtime. And it's just a vicious cycle. Recommendations we found are as follows. Addition of three new FTE to 911 dispatch function. And we'll get the org chart here in a second. Promoting one communications officer to a communication supervisor. Promoting another communications officer to a lead communications officer. We already have one. And I guess mentioned before, both of those positions, as well as the chief of ops, would be required to perform the duties of communications officer. Then hire three new entry-level communications officers to round out that staffing. The emergency management program coordinator's position, the increase from half FTE to 0.75 FTE. And the increase in those wages and benefits, we've learned over the last several months, having this 0.5 FTE, that there is room in the grants that we currently have to allow for that additional three-quarter time to be covered in grant reimbursements. What you have next in your packet is the current org chart of our structure now. All the FTE to the left of the director's, or excuse me, the right of the director's position is the three boxes where the contractors that I manage and oversee and the public safety radio system. And it flows down from there. Nine communications officers, two casuals, which needed to point out that those two casuals are budgeted as one FTE. So we split those two positions, and that's what HR and myself worked out that was the best way to manage that. Then one lead communications officer and a chief of operations. And the emergency management program coordinator at halftime and the account administrative assistant at one FTE. The next sheet is the recommendation that was presented to the board in 2011 by the Public Safety Advisory Board, I believe it was called. The numbers in red. Well, first I'll say the numbers in black is what existed under the sheriff's office, looking at the left side, lower part of that org chart, under the sheriff's office managing, and then what the advisory board recommended is in red. Which under that, that recommendation, there's a total of 14 personnel under the, of just communications officers underneath the chief of operations, what we call now, they list here as a dispatch manager, which is exactly what the next sheet shows you is the structure review panels recommendation for an org chart. Shows 10 communications officers, two lead communications officers, and a communication supervisor. Which is a total of three three bodies. Plan there because of the way these things work with the promoting one communications officer to the second. We already have the one lead. Promote one more lead. Promote one to a supervisor, and then you would be hiring three new personnel at the entry level. Step one, communications officers position. Then up in the upper left is the emergency management program coordinator and increase to 0.75 FTE. Next is what I found very interesting, and I won't get into the details unless we need to. But it's a series of actual schedules and sample schedules. First one, and this is for the last three months of this year. June's actual schedule, and I went back and looked at it. The boxes that are in red in the field there, across the top, those are the days that we did overtime shifts for coverage. And the boxes in the field, if you look up to the upper left-hand corner, there are a total of 22 overtime shifts for the month of June under the staffing that we have now. And if we add the staffing and structure that we're recommending, June's schedule would have been zero overtime shifts for coverage.
Tina, did you bring the dollar amount for the 22 days?
He always likes to jump to the last page. Yep, so that was from 22 to 0 in June, July is.
Hold my horses.
It's okay. I'm with you, man. July, total of 16 overtime coverage shifts. In the, in the recommended structure, it would equal zero again. And you can see, like I said, we've sanitized this, no names, it's just by position. So supervisor working on a 14-hour schedule gives them that flexibility to, to see everyone throughout the week because we work. Remember, you can see here that we're a combination of communication shifts, three days on, two off, two on, three off, two on, and so on. And they work from 6:00 AM to midnight, or excuse me, 6:00 AM to 6:00 AM. 12-hour shifts. Six to six, sorry. So if somebody's not there, shift change, then you're not getting to see all your people. The ones that would be on night shifts, you wouldn't see them typically, schedule is in its normal format for two months. Stay until after 6:00 or get there before 6:00 and 4:00. So that's, this schedule is designed so that not only supervisor would be able to see everyone, but both leads would then be shift supervisors for half of each day. I would see everyone for six hours a day for each shift on two different teams. August is just last month, 28 overtime shifts coverage. And that again went to zero by using the leads and supervisors to cover those shifts. And now last page, Commissioner Christopher, this shows you.
Where did you go?
Oh, yeah, don't do that to him, yeah. Yeah, so on the left-hand side, you can see the actuals and overtime coverage shift in dollar amounts for June, July, and August. That three-month total, $3,008, or $38,402. If you project that out for a year in this staffing condition, that's a total of $153,609 in overtime.
Is that projected, or did you go up for the last year to see all?
That's a projection as to what we're doing right now, is the actuals over the last three.
Can you, or can you go to the actuals after the, over the last year and get that?
Good.
Yes, that'd be a far more.
True number. Thank you, Brett. Yep, and so the other half of this spreadsheet shows, you know, the cost of promoting two people and hiring three more for a total, and then with the offset in overtime, as we are currently spending it, would be that $58,788 would be the actual increase. That is knowing full well that that fluctuates, that this is a snapshot of where we are right now, what we are currently paying for overtime. Because of, like I said, the current staffing and structure that we have. And in the future, if, if this recommendation is accepted and put into place, that's, that's gonna take a year, maybe a year and a half to be fully realized as well. Between the hiring and training process. Because we're already down, two people seem to be three.
So I would assume that if we did this, then that would free up your schedule some to where you can actually have time to work on and finish the potential funding source.
Yes, sir.
Is your chief of operations, 911 coordinator gonna be qualified to step in an emergency to take over? Is that part of what you wrote in the?
For, yeah, both for this call-taking dispatching, yes. And then the also train to take over management operation of the radio system, as well as nine, or the emergency management program activities to support the coordinator. That, that is the goal, yes, someone that if I am not here to truly manage the department in a way that, you know, will get us through anything, so I can actually have a day off. Any day off. So I went through that pretty quickly because I anticipated some questions. I mean, today's already been a day. It wasn't too fast. I'll wait till.
I would be interested in, you know, three months is a really good snapshot, but it would be good to look back a year, the full year, and I know. Because that's gonna be a really accurate number then, because it shows, because I don't, you know, we're I don't know, maybe you can just answer part of it too, is, you know, was the, was June, July, and August? You know. It's comparable throughout, I mean, I know there's, but that's kind of the high season as far as vacations, and so they're, they're generally, I bet if I look, I don't know, but I, I'm guessing that our overtime traditionally has a higher spike in the summer than the rest of the time, so I don't know, it'd be interesting what the, the, what the numbers would be, so that we're actually looking at real.
Yes.
You can see that. And if you could actually go back two years, it would do it at two years, a full year snapshot, because we know 2020. Oh, yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Of course, I don't know that your operations were any different because of.
Yeah, because.
It's 24/7.
Yeah.
Pandemic, we don't care, we still gotta answer the phone.
It was affected in different ways.
Asteroid strike, doesn't matter, gets invoked.
I would say that our schedule is today, so it's okay. I would say our schedule is affected in, in different ways, but keep in mind that the communications officers have seniority bidding for their primary vacations that is done, coming up real soon in the fall for the whole next year. So people have their time, and I would say there are maybe a couple of months in the year that there are less vacations taken. But to, to allow people to have their time off, we.
Well, same regard, there might have been less during COVID, and we're gonna have more next year.
No, no, so.
People didn't take them.
So in the seniority bids, I don't remember anybody giving any vacation time back unless it was needed for emergency staff.
Do you have a lot of vacation holdovers, I guess my question.
Yes, they build it quickly, we, you know.
So we.
I wanna be able to give it to them.
Use next year.
I wanna give them all the vacation they, they have earned, definitely, and right now, we can't.
I, I don't know that going back a year or two years is going to change my vote on this, but I do think it would be a wise decision just so we can have our financing going forward. Forecast the best number that we can possibly get, so.
Yeah, that's just to show the offset in the overtime savings. The actual budget will be what we're expanding for the three new hires and the two promotions. But at least a certain percent of that overtime, and I, I will say that it's gonna be a significant percentage of that overtime will be eliminated because of the staffing that you have.
And then.
Once we become fully staffed and fully trained.
Stupid question, but question, I'm gonna say it. I'm gonna start with the general to that. The question that don't get.
And, and part of the issue is that we are so minimally staffed to run a 24/7 operation with two people on that anytime we have a vacancy, and with the hiring process and the training lead time that takes, you're looking anywhere from four to seven months to get someone hired and to get them trained and put in as an actual partner that we're in this perpetual loop of people burning out because they're working overtime and then having, and having an opening, and then, and whether they're burning out or just taking, one thing that I found interesting looking back at the data was that for at least the last three years, nobody has resigned as communications officer here and gone to another agency to be a communications officer. They've gone to, to into other careers, mostly Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. So, you know, they're burning out on this, and then that causes food left to be overtaxed more, and it just keeps feeding on itself, and with two or three more people, then you can break that cycle, you can have those people in training and still have one or two open slots and still have enough people to cover their schedule without making everybody work excessive overtime.
And another thing we've noticed just in the past year, or two years, is the severity of the calls, like Jeff has already said. Right now, as you guys have seen when you guys came up and did that brief tour, is if somebody's on a 911, your partner has to fill in and page and get people going. But right now, with as much stuff as going on in our world and our community, you were taking two people who are just jammed on the phone constantly and trying to call somebody in during an event. We don't have the time to do that, so when you get somebody in afterwards, everything's done. All of the calls are gone for fire calls, your initial 30 minutes to an hour, you're taking 50 to 100 calls. And if you get somebody in, sometimes they're 20 to 30 minutes delayed because they have to get ready, then they're driving to work. By then, it's done.
Situation is stabilized, yeah.
Correct, so in the schedule that, that we have provided and the simple schedule is you would have another person there on a swing shift, as well as your lead could step in and help with answering phone calls. You don't have to have that wait time to have somebody come in, they could help with that 50 phone calls all at once and trying to weed through, you know, do you have an emergency or are you reporting this? We had a fire a couple of weeks ago, and it was, you know, fire call, fire call, fire call, and then just kidding, here's a medical call. So then we have to get pulled away from that when there's another event going on.
I just wanted to voice my support for the restructure. Dispatchers are the vital backbone of the emergency management services provided in this county. I know firsthand how stressed they are, I have a daughter who's the dispatcher. I also, I'm sorry, sometimes do, it's okay.
Just like, I can't take it.
As a person who I have a radio beside, you know, my bed every night listening. This county is seeing more and more medical calls. Our our ambulance crews, sometimes we have three ambulances out at the same time. So not only are they doing maybe three or four major medicals, they're doing fire and all the non-911 calls that are coming in. The number of citizens is gonna start increasing, the number of lands bought in this county is increasing, there's all these factors. Look at the amount of visitors that come in, it's not just our residents who use our emergency services. It's our visitors, it's the tourists that come in, who require and want help when they call 911. These guys are absolutely drained by the end of the shift. And any hope that we can beat to them is absolutely detrimental to the future of this county.
Another thing that I don't know that you guys were aware of, or if it was spoken about when you guys were up for that little tour, was the calls on 84, so we filter numerous calls in Oregon because the cell towers are on the Washington side. If there's an accident, if there is, the roads closed, or there's a rock or a deer, for heaven forbid, in the road, we have to filter all of those calls, and then we, if we see that there's a fire in one county, we will only transfer one or two, but then we're answering all of their overflow. We will only transfer one or two, but then we're answering all of their overflow. So we're, we're doing all of that for them so they don't get overwhelmed, that's another thing that takes. Sometimes you need three people just to do that.
And this, this schedule. Uh, if I might, yeah. Is designed so that they're, like I said, that the leads are on a late swing. Which puts them in the busiest times of the day for that twelve hours, so that they're there to, to be a shift supervisor. And keep in mind, we've taken, used a lot of the experience that the sheriff's office Jane gained. Through trial and error of staffing the jail. This is almost identical to the jail structure for corporals and sergeants and the chief. Um, with the exception that instead of having a corporal on each full day shift and full night shift for two teams. Um, we think it will be sufficient to have, we call a lead, they call a corporal, in that late swing. That spans the six hours that is the busiest, highest call volume for the day. And only be there for twelve hours out of a twenty four hour day, but it provides for that as well as having that shift, that supervisor. There. On that four ten that spans both and can get a lot of the things which. It's hard to articulate how much has to get done behind the scenes to keep all of these systems functioning. So that we can answer the nine one calls and put out the radio traffic and record all the data in the CAD system and so on. Christian Anderson, yeah, any questions?
So I know what these communication officers get paid. I know that, uh, the overtime is what makes. You bump up to that living, truly living wage. How is all the communications officers onboard with having no overtime?
We did not, the panel did not address that.
Cause I think that's really.
I spoke with, um, so I am the shop steward for the union, so I have spoken to a lot of our communications officers. And a lot of them right now, yeah, they rely on the overtime, you know, some of them do, granted, I'm one of them, I like the money. Um, but a lot of it right now is we need a time off, yes, this will. We, we won't say eliminate the overtime, but it will significantly decrease it. And I think that's what we're looking at is just having that time off, not worrying about, okay, it's my day off, do I stay in our county to? We might get called in, or do I actually go and actually have a day off or a vacation?
Or giving, yeah, given the current circumstance, sorry to cut in, but that's a valid point is. They often, at least the best among them, will take that into consideration, today's schedule with our. Um, staffing who's out vacationing sick isn't responsible for me as the next. Likely person to have to come in and cover, to actually go out of town. That those, that's, that's how dedicated they are, um, and it comes down in my opinion to a quality of life, right? At some point, yet the money does not equal the quality of life that.
And that's like, right now, that's, I think that's where all of this got to that is we've all put in. A significant amount of overtime the past few months that we're all just, we, we need a life outside of work. Our quality of life to even just take a break and then come to do our best while we're at work is what we need. Especially with the calls being more stressful, when you have a stressful home life. Working, not sleeping to hang out with your family because we work very odd shifts. And then coming into work and dealing with somebody else's crisis, that's a lot of stress on two people. And you see your, you see your coworkers and your partners more than you see your family. So that's, we've all had to take in that consideration where now we're putting all of our home stress and our work stress on our partner. And then that's just, your, our quality of life just really isn't there.
I guess I'll go first.
Just, sorry, I'm just handing some from KC about the OT totals. So year to date for twenty twenty one, she pulled, that is actually, yeah, today. Number fourteen, ninety eight thousand one hundred and forty two dollars, keep in mind that includes a certain amount of overtime. That is monthly, I think it runs in a six thousand dollar range, but that's the year to date totals, nearly a hundred thousand dollars.
Five more months to go.
Correct.
I think it's also important to realize the amount of duties that Jeff has to accomplish. During the time he's at work. I don't know if you guys have been into his office and see all the different, all the different things he has to do for his own job. On top of that.
Have, have you guys ever seen the movie Jerry Maguire? That'd be a hello. There you had me at alone. I mean, yes, gentlemen. Let me ask one question, feel free.
How many positions during these three months did you have not filled? Versus in.
One and two, so June was one for the full month, I believe it was. And then you also have to consider the, like you said, the vacations, we do our best by contract, we're supposed to do our best to give two people. Vacation time at the same time. That's part of the reason my emergency declaration started today for staffing. And then, you know, folks that are out for medical procedures, surgeries and so on, but in June, I believe it was one for all or most of the month, July. There was two that overlapped and we filled that pretty quickly and then August, there's two. Continues to be two because we have one that was her last, last night was her last shift. And then Monday, we started the one person in training, so right now we're down to.
Okay, and the average dispatcher works fifteen days a year, a month, correct?
In a normal schedule though, we're fifteen days a month, yes.
Okay, and so if, if I'm looking at this, we're, you know, we're down one staffer. For June, right, June was one, so if I took fifteen days of overtime, remove that. Now we're down to seven. Seven shifts. July, we had two, I mean, sixteen. So. Minus thirty two or thirty on. And thus, you've got a training, you've got people that are not taking vacation. Get two weeks vacation a year, I'm a. I would be hard pressed. If you had three more positions, which would be the equivalent of forty five shifts a month. When you're working on. Twenty two shifts a month of overtime and I would like that averaged over the month. Uh, because as, you know, we know that it, it goes certain ways, um, I think that was the whole position of casual employees, correct? So that they can fill in when other people are doing, somebody who wants to help them be there.
They can only work a limited amount of hours.
And they can only work a limited amount of hours, but you have, you know, multiple positions are potentially available. Um, I'm just trying to, and, and I, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying you don't have the hardest working employees. I'm not saying that, um, they all, they all definitely deserve their time off, I'm just trying to work the numbers out because. As you know, we have a very big budget. And I'm trying to like truly understand what we have to provide, what we need to provide and what we'd like to provide. And how we're gonna keep it, I know that the position is always going to be rolling over, um, just because the same thing in the jail. It's a difficult life when you're working nights and then you're going from nights and you've got family and everything else, it's very hard, you're always gonna have that turnover. That's always a part of life, I just need to know based on the numbers, what's the best thing for the county? In total, and so that's why I need those actual numbers so that we can make those really tough choices. Uh, because remember, if I hire three of you, I'm gonna have to let somebody else go.
That's why my only regret in this process is that I didn't, I didn't. I didn't push the issue four years ago.
I heard you were pushing it pretty hard four years ago, so.
Just, yeah, it's, yeah, now is one of the least. You know, favorable times to bring anything this team, but they can in good conscience continue to go on. Just making do with what I've got, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm here to give you the facts, uh, you want two more years, the last two years actuals overtime?
Yeah.
Definitely, we can provide that. Um, and I wanna, I wanna just clarify the, the casual positions. Maybe Casey can help me with this, but then in casual, the state rules for DRS and so on, and how many hours you can work on. It was, having those two casual positions was two for one is to have somebody in training. And we do our best, put them in full time training. Even if they wanna be a casual, but we can work them for five months, uh, full time before we have to cut off according to state rules. And then that, that box. Correct me if I'm wrong, right, that box then has to wait for a certain amount of time before you can. Use them again, if you go over that threshold of more than seventy hours or whatever it is in a month or five months straight. On top of, so that was a training tool to, to get the next person trained up and ready to win the open hole comes. So like now, we know we've got somebody else leaving at the end of December for a. Retirement, but we've already used up all our time and budget in the casual positions, both in training. Because of turnover, we had to train two people. And then the one casual we still have is, uh, is one of those casual positions in that open, is, is working. Filling shifts as well, so it was dual fold, train tool and have somebody that could fill shifts. As needed, be more flexible, that part of it has been a really hard sell. It's getting an actual casual that was just willing and able to fill shifts on an asking you basis. Nobody's actually panned out for very long in that position, they, they either, and which is the good part. They either promote up to full time or they just go find something else to do. Yeah, but I will get you the two years.
So I assume it's, it's reasonable to assume that. Uh, part of the factor of, of the heavy turnover in the department, I mean, what the, you have a terrible job, I mean, that's really hard.
Appreciate that.
It is, I, I understand that. And I, and I think it's, and I think it's reasonable that part of the heavy turnover is, it's just the workload and the burnout and. And sometimes we don't, I, I think sometimes we don't give enough, um, weight to. The cost of training, of getting people up to speed and all of that, that we think of it as just, you know, kind of raw bodies. It's like, you know, if everything's full, but it really is, it costs a lot of money to get somebody trained. That's why it's important to retain people because we've made this huge investment in people and then they're like, they're, you know, they pull their hair out, they leave. And we lose all that investment. So I'm, I'm really interested, I wanna understand the. Am I, are we? Are we more than fixing the problem with this proposal? And then frankly, that, which is not, the, the part of it that's not anything to do with you folks is how we pay for it, that's our job to figure out how to pay for it. As far as, um, you know, cause we are, you know, without some change, we're, we're gonna have to take it from somewhere else and put it there. And it would, it would be that we have to reprioritize what we're currently spending money on and that's, you know, that can be done. That's, that's not, but it's, it's not painless, it's always easy to make decisions when nobody, nobody cares because nobody gets hurt. So to speak, so.
And to, and to kind of expand on your point, when we're training someone, that, that five to six months of training, we're paying that person full time. We're paying a trainer to train them, uh, as well as we're filling the, the open shift right now because we don't have enough depth in our. Staffing, you know, not to have to fill those shifts.
I'm just, I'm just trying to have an honest appraisal with myself about, like, I don't. It's not as simple as, cause I don't believe if we hired three new FTE, the overtime's not just gonna go away. It will come down significantly, but let's have our eyes open that we're not gonna see the full benefit of that. It just never worked, we've been through this in the, in the jail, we've been through it and it's really helped. Once we, and we saw, you know, there was issues way back. Uh, with road deputies and what our, what our wages were, we had huge turnover all the time, we, we don't have any. We, we fixed that problem and it was, it was principally, you know, compensating people so that they wanted to stick around and we were not a revolving door. And I believe we've saved a bunch of money because of that, but we didn't save enough to pay for what we had to do, but we paid for. A good portion of it, so I'm just saying that I, I, I wanna be realistic about the, what the costs are and I wanna be sure. I, I wanna be sure, so I know what my real number is that I'm really working on as far as not. And I don't, you, you come in here, it's like, oh, well, for an extra fifty eight, that, well, I could probably find fifty eight thousand dollars, it's not fifty eight thousand dollars. It's not two hundred and two, but it's not fifty eight either.
And I hope I didn't make that inference or try and come across that way, that's not, I'm just saying that this is the last three months actually. Real time data, um, and yes, and, and what I, what I said in the, in my summary was that. This will significantly reduce, right, this is, it's not gonna reduce all of our overtime, no. And because I believe just as we are now. And maybe I came into this position foolish. And a dreamer, but I believe that at a certain point, we, we could become fully staffed, fully trained and.
If that was my next question.
Yeah.
Is it possible?
If we, it has been possible, I think six months in twenty nineteen, yes, or seven months and a few months into twenty twenty. It's happened for short periods of time over the, almost seven years I've been doing this, but it's not gonna be a normal. Situation, it's not gonna be our status quo, so with the number of people we got. We just keep hurting the people that are left behind, right, if that makes sense. It's, we're always gonna have staffing turnover and, and, and retraining, training issues. Yeah, and so if we have enough people to, to fill a schedule without having to work excessive overtime. Uh, we're always gonna have one or two people in the training pipeline, that, that's my seven years is talking to.
So, so then if you could go back to that twenty nineteen and see what that ship looked like when we were fully staffed and, and being able to see that would help us a lot. And then on here, if you would, if you would just put on here how many open positions there were that month and week, and then we can see that difference.
That, that's what we need in order to make the decisions. Anything else?
Thanks for all the work. Bring more money, I think I said that earlier though.
I just brought you like thirty three thousand or some dollar, thirty eight thousand this morning. Thank you.
Now we will.
So. Next steps, you want me to, to get this information and set a new time or give that to you? Uh, in a document form?
As always, try to get it to me ahead of schedule. And then I can write.
I apologize.
All right, no, it's been a day.
Been a couple of weeks, yes.
It's okay, been a year or a couple of years. Could tell you exactly, yeah.
So your guidance from Mr. Jeff, he says bring back more numbers?
I can say realistically that the implementation, if there was a change. Is not gonna take place until after we get through this budget process, I mean, we're. You know, it's September, now that doesn't mean, depending on what the board decides, because again, you have open positions right now. And it may make a difference to, if there's a policy change on the part of the board prior to implementation, if the board commits to something. That may help with morale, with, you know. If, so I'm not saying, oh, we're not even gonna talk about it till January, that's not what I mean, I mean. It's highly unlikely, it seems to me, that we would take this information, make a thing and then implement it next month. Because we're mid, we're implementing, meaning go out and hire, fill the. Because we're mid, we're implementing, meaning go out and hire, fill those holes you already got and go hire three new people. I don't see that happening because I think, and I don't think you could. Frankly, if I gave you a briefcase full of cash today.
If, I would be, I would be happy to, to address your line of thought there. If the board would approve. Whatever this recommendation or any version of it. Cause the original recommendation when this department was formed in twenty eleven, you know, there was a, something lesser that was, uh, approved, right? But. This. This is what's gonna set us up for long-term success as a department. As a county that, that needs to provide for nine-one call-taking and dispatching as well as emergency management programs. If you gave approval that affected January one. We can start with the new work chart, whatever that takes, right? That. That is reasonable and exciting. I mean, that's what I would expect, I guess I'll say. I didn't have any, yeah, fantasies that you would, we'd walk out here today and. What I. To get us through the current. Emergency staffing issues that we're facing. I've been considering coming to the board with a request, uh, or I guess. A question that i-if we could be allowed to come with a budget supplemental request that included additional wages and benefits. Because we know, the rarity is that we know months in advance, we got somebody retiring at the end of December, right? I'm not, because we, we spent this much overtime, right? I'm, I'm not, I don't, we're gonna have to get a supplemental anyway to cover the wages and benefits for this year. If I could get enough to hire somebody as soon as I could and get him started in training. So I don't have to start the hiring process ten-one, like when it's faking and count on next year's budget. And then one or two months for the process, then five to six months for the training. And I'm well into next year before that hole gets filled again. Frankly, with the hiring and training process, there's no way. With that lag time. It will be fully staffed. Before, after middle half of next year, we'll be. In the third quarter of next year before we can get fully staffed and fully trained.
So what would it take to do that? I'm thinking, what you, what you talked to us about this morning. So you did, you brought additional where we have revenues over budget for one thirty-five.
Correct, yes.
Is that adequate to, would that be enough of an offset to, to be able to. Go ahead and start trying to fill the position for the vacancy ahead of time that we know.
Yeah, so.
I'm asking you to go back and crunch that and see, cause that makes it easier, cause I'm not actually having to come up with any. Additional, it's money I, I wasn't planning on, that I already have.
It was unexpected.
I love to spend it. I can't, I can't spend it out of one thirty-five, but. It's, we put other money to fund that and maybe we didn't have to put in as much, but I'm willing to at least entertain. Cause I think it's reasonable, given the. Critical nature of your staff shortages that you have, like you're, in a sense, it's a gift where you know in advance somebody's retiring. And that doesn't mean then on. If you have to wait until they actually walk out the door before you can start recruiting to replace them. There's a gap that now just makes it even that much worse. And so if you can start early.
So the.
On the same regard, I would actually, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I was.
You, your question was at the beginning, I believe, you know, what would, what would make it work?
Right.
So in my estimation. The open position we have right now, right? Cause we just hired one, she's in training. I'm very hopeful that's gonna work out. We've got one open position right now. We know we got another one to come. So in this round of hiring, if I could hire two or three in that and get them started in training, cause there's also.
Washington, though, before we get that, remind me, you have one open position that you're gonna be hiring for. You have a, you have another, I mean, that's two.
Yep.
So hiring for three without a new.
My casual position.
Okay.
Right, so like, cause that's the other.
So don't, don't try to sneak in. Oh, you have inadvertently already authorized what.
So if I can hire three people.
I've been fooled before, not by you.
But if I, so there's economy of scale, right? Because if I hire one now and I put them in training and then there's a certain amount of classroom training and so on, and then I hire another one. You know, February or whenever I can get one hired after their retirement. Then there's duplication, right? If, if I can put two people or three people in training at the same time, there's an economy of scale there. And I guarantee you, one out of two. I've seen it over and over again. Sometimes it's our second choice that comes through. Like some people I know, first choice washed out of training, second choice was a casual. To her credit, she stuck with us and shortly. She was the full-timer. But we start two or three in training and at least one out of the three is gonna wash out. That, that's what would help and that would get us months ahead. When that next vacancy comes up in January. We would be that far ahead in the training process, so we would only have, you know, a few more months for one or two.
Okay, crunch, crunch some numbers and what would it take to do that?
I guess I'm kind of also looking at, um, with this, this morning's presentation about. Historical rate numbers coming back larger, I'm automatically adding that into the number you just presented, so. It made that number smaller to me or offset that number because I never thought it was too much away from.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't.
I was, let's be.
I don't, I don't wanna. Be foolish enough to think that that, that level of revenue is gonna sustain, yeah. But it gives us a breathing room to figure out a, a long-term sustainable revenue. That's the other project I got it, that's what's been working on.
But if, oh, go ahead.
Okay, a couple of the things I wanna know, you said, what I wanna know. I wanna know what's your average length, the people are staying right now over the last few years?
And.
Okay, cause if I, if my average length of people staying is two to three years, but it takes six months to train them, five to six months, I need to know that. I need to know what percentage washout? Over the last few training sessions? So that we can make these decisions so that we can get to fully, you know. At all times. And then if I can, then if I know what the average length of people. Just burnout, whether you're fully staffed or not, I mean, you're always gonna have burnout.
And a clarifying question, though. First you said washout, then you said burnout. So washout is in the training process or burnout after?
People, or what percentage of people are, are washing out?
Of training, okay. Yep.
And, and then I need to know, you know, what is the average length of stay for our poor inmates in that position?
I wanted to say that, that the job is very rewarding too. I mean, when you.
Well, of course, you gotta work with you.
I'm gonna pay for that comment. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, so that's two things that I need to be able to see on, on that graph so that I can figure. How truly long, how often we should be expecting within new economies, you know, with statistics, you should be able to figure it out and average things out. So that we know exactly where we need to be, cause you're always gonna have those positions. Always do. So if you know, we've gotta have the box for her and have it there, knowing that it's probably never gonna be fully staffed. But we need to, to take that overtime and reduce it. Now, I don't know if I can ask or whatnot. But the other thing is, is I don't want people to quit because they're not getting an overtime, overtime hours, so they went to go work at a solar farm or something else, cause they can make more money. You know, so I need to know that level too. Cause we're all thinking about going to the solar park.
Let's hold hands and all go together.
Yeah.
This is too important for anybody to give up on. Definitely. That's why I'm still here.
Right.
Yep, I'm in it for the long haul. It might kill me, but I'm, I'm not.
Well, I'm glad you are, cause we might be going to the solar farm.
Jeff, what are the funny part? It could be the funny part.
Yeah, is that.
We should move forward to.
Yeah, but that's what I need to know, two things.
Yeah, I've been taking notes as quick as I can. I know how much you like email. If you have any specifics like that.
Oh, no, if I.
Document it, email it to me, that'd be awesome. I'll try and I, I hear clicking on the fan in the background, so Casey has been helping me, I'm sure. Document what I need to bring back to you.
Shaking her head, no.
I am. She's awesome. If I could recruit her from raw, wouldn't be the upset, but boy. Okay.
So they'll need your phone numbers, but if they don't have somebody show up, they're gonna call you the dispatch, just so you know.
Tell me, I was told with hello.
For citizens. They don't allow meatball and chips.
Yeah, tell me guys that we're told with hello.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. I, um. I appreciate you taking the time and being engaged even after, um, your last session.
Mr. Chairman, um, we didn't have a part of time for citizen comments for the people that were on. Can we put that up again? I mean, we only have seventeen people right now.
You wanna just roll through some of this, sir?
Yeah, get it done.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think you must be the official business agenda that's presented.
All right, I will, I'll second the motion.
Oh, yeah, no, we didn't. Do you have a motion in a second on the business agenda, such as it is? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August fourth, twenty twenty-one, and August thirtieth, thirty-first, twenty twenty-one is presented.
Second to motion.
And you got your comments on the last one. I have a motion in a second on the August twenty-fourth and August thirty-first, meeting minutes, any discussion on those? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda with all five items.
Second to motion. Okay, I have a motion in a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay, pay estimate number seventeen to Kirby-Nagle Hawk Construction Company in the amount of one million, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars. And forty-three cents, which excludes retainage in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. And includes sales tax for the total payment amount of one million, one hundred sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-three cents for the county service building contract number C zero-three-one-two-zero.
I will second that motion. You have a motion in a second on P estimate number seventeen to Kirby-Nagle Hawk, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we pay, pay estimate to Stripe Right Incorporated in the amount of thirty-five thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars and three cents. Excluding one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-five cents in retainage. For a total payment amount of thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-eight cents for the twenty-twenty-one annual striking program.
I will second the motion. I have a motion in a second on P estimate, uh, final P estimate, Stripe Right. Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Right.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay, pay estimates, final pay estimate to hit striping in the amount of eight thousand and six dollars and forty cents for the countywide edge lines.
I will second the motion with, uh, the statement that hereby you are no longer named bump.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I made a motion that we pay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of one million, four hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-five cents on the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of eight hundred and twenty thousand. One hundred and sixty-three dollars and six cents for the date of the, twenty twenty-one.
I will second that motion as well. You have a motion in a second to pay the bills, any discussion?
Others, I need to drink a water, but go ahead.
All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
I see the treasure is on, I don't know, Greg, if you're listening, you can head on down.
Anybody interested in going over some other fun things?
Yeah. Go ahead, board pending. Take one down, pass it around.
Got an email from Danny Stone. Who's the commissioner in Grant County. Tom Dent, thirteen legislative district wrote this letter with the help of Representative Schmick. And it's one page and two pages, it's the same thing, I believe, but just.
All one's on.
Yeah, I had her print the original.
Has it changed or is it the same word?
No, it's the same. You can see this one's on there, state legislator.
Re-formatted correctly.
So I had to print straight out of the email from them. Anyway, Representative Schmick helped them draft it and Senator Warnock. Also assisted in putting the document together. They helped to get this before the governor by September twentieth. If we can do this, we could, uh, if we chose to do this as one or all, we could then have this emailed. To. The honorable Mr. Dent. Legislature can present, they're hoping to get sheriff's prosecutors and character all over the state.
Okay. First thoughts on it, cause I read it a little bit earlier. Do you, are you really expecting and requesting an in-person meeting with Governor Inslee? Do you think there's any reasons to include more?
I, I.
I understand what Tom, what Tom Dent and Judy Warnock sent and they play with that, but should that be included?
I have no problem citing the document as presented, even though I don't think it will, uh, make a difference in anything. They don't think you're getting a phone call either, let alone a personal meeting, but I can still request them. Again, it's not my document. Uh, their original plan, I believe, was to have their document, it just had a signature sheet to it. This says by Mr. Danny Stone. Uh, I told Representative Dent that we, great credit commissioners could sign a signature sheet and we could send it to him as a PDF. He thought that would work. So now it kinda has our county letterhead on it, but I don't care if we send the county one or sign his one. And in. I didn't find much. Adverse comments in there. So.
You finished reading the name?
I'm gonna step away for just a second, run in the hall so I can actually concentrate.
That's not a bad decision.
Talk about other, no, we're not recessed, are you?
Well, I can use. Yeah, let's.
Vice Chair, how about you recess? Five minutes.
Not the discussedness, but it's gonna be maybe just a five hour.
Craig is coming down. Is that, is it Todd? No, great idea. Thank you.
What was the deadline they were hoping for?
Uh, they hope to send this to the governor by September twentieth, which I believe is next month.
Letter actually states their, looks like they're requesting a response from the governor by the twentieth.
Yeah, but it also, that's what it said. You please speak with your fellow commissioners to consider as a group or maybe individuals, saying as well. Senator Schmick and Senator Warnock, assistant, yokes this descendants to governor by September twentieth, respond to go directly to him.
Commissioners. Well, I, I'm not prepared to sign it right now, necessarily.
Is it today?
Is it?
Maybe we'll discuss it later, okay.
I just am, I am concerned with, um.
Well, it was.
I don't like, I don't like rewarding bad behavior.
No, this was brought up, um, to them when they walked in, um, this was on my desk, we printed it this morning, it had nothing to do with them.
Well, I know that, no, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that for.
On our agenda today. During board pending at three oh five, that was very early in the conversation, so it wasn't, I don't look at it as rewarding that behavior, because it was going to be brought up, uh, regardless if there was anyone here. And they were.
Can we pass that on and let, uh, our good treasurer?
Yeah. No, I apologize for making you guys wait, I was watching on the phone, I wasn't sure if you guys were ready for me yet, so. Anyway, I read the. Um, so, uh, we are processing away, we're getting ready for second half payments that will start to be coming in here. We're starting to get some of them a little bit, so that's good. Um, we are continuing our office hours, nine AM to four thirty, um, and we are trying to encourage folks to use the drop boxes if possible, just due to all the different things, just eliminate the traffic, but we are open to the public, so that's just a quick thought. Um, the finance committee met on the tenth, um, was a fairly short meeting, Dave was via Zoom and Brendan and I were in the chambers. Um, we had a short agenda, but the items on there, we had an update on the Rescue America funding, um, and there was really no update, other than we did get into a bit of a discussion about the second round of the infrastructure, and how there's really no, that's very vague and out there in the cloud and so on and so forth, but we just, that was, there's a lot of rulemaking that will go along with that. And that we were, we're getting through the first, so there was really no updates other than that little piece. Um, we talked about the budget, um, and the budgeting, um, the meetings were underway. Jen had kind of talked about things, I know that the auditor and myself were very complimentary and appreciate the boards. Um, that we appreciated listening to the, to the, the way they're set up and the work that Jen has done, I think that that came up multiple times, and that Jen's done a very good job of trying to get pieces in front of us to put together a really good budget, and so, um, the auditor and the treasurer passed that along in that meeting, and I would pass along this meeting. Um, and the state audit, Brenda is continuing to work on the state audit and working on, um, a potential extension on the single audit, which is due by nine thirty. Um, and then we set the next meeting for nine twenty four at nine AM. Was pretty short and sweet, so, um, that was the main part of that. Uh, the, my office update, uh, we are continuing to work on some pieces to the state audit, that is one thing we're working on in our office. We are continuing, we have been, we worked on our budgets, I guess they're done, now we're moving on to other things, but that had been something we've been putting, putting work into, and looking at other budget numbers to keep going with the current budget. And we are working on beginning to have the second half payments come in. Uh, those are the biggies, it's just standard fare, we're continuing to remain busy with a lot of real estate excises, um, and that can, those numbers to continue to be high. So, that is the report, I don't really have anything else, super exciting that's happening as we go. There are just questions.
Yeah, just saying, I need to know, could you print the attachments for me for them?
All have a great day.
Super.
Alright, thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you.
I guess I'll, I don't see him, but it will.
Uh, let's do our board pending stuff, and then we'll get in touch with him and see if he wants to, if he's.
So if you want to keep thinking about that.
No, I'm just.
My next work.
No, okay, I guess, yes.
I'm gonna try to. Um, which this one's kind of a prosecutor potentially as well. I, I sent a letter to MRSC about bulletproof vest, uh, going into the surplus auction and background checks and blah 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 blah. Uh, and we can print this, but they said there is no legal requirement for background checks to be performed, and it could just with the sale of body armor. Uh, they also emailed this to the prosecutor, because I normally should ask him this question personally. Uh, it does prohibit certain films from purchase, they get or owning it, but doesn't give us any, no, we can't sell it. Uh, with that, I would say that we move forward with the surplus of the body armor, or if you want to, we can get a legal opinion from our prosecutor, uh, to see if it corresponds with what, um, MRSCs.
I'd like to hear what the prosecutor says, but I think you should probably get one for each of us up here first. Can you send it?
What do you want?
We should get one set for each of us up here.
Well, I was thinking, well, by far, if for some reason this doesn't surplus, no, 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 we're gonna take a.
Two for me.
We're gonna take some razor blades, and we're gonna glue the rest of it under the front of the cap right here.
Okay.
There you go, the ballistic plate. So, is that an official, let's get a prosecutor, official, then Danny?
Yeah.
My official opinion requested.
On whether we can surplus body armor.
That body armor or not.
Um, and then, Miss Lee, if you could, uh, share my screen.
I think you can do that yourself. If you can't, let me know.
I don't know, I haven't done it on this iPad.
Jake had it all set up.
What did I do, what?
You've set it up so anybody could share their screen.
Yeah, anybody should be able to share.
Where's my tab you for that?
Should get a.
I have an iPad, so mine's right for, mine's in the top right, but.
Oh, Joey, the green one?
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you, which one is?
Okay.
We're, we're sure.
This is our mapping software, we're talking about, uh, trailers, should you just manufacture homes?
Yeah.
If you look at these properties, well, first off, I will back out a snitch in this property, we're moving my hand, is the one in question with the trailers in this regard.
Wait, what's just to the left of that?
Oh, you're gonna get there, sir. Uh, let's talk about nuisance compliance, look at that property. And then we'll snitch forward, right here, you'll see a trailer, this trailer caught fire years ago, it's a Harvey. There's tires on the roof, uh, it's another nuisance compliance, um, then we'll roll up here to the corner. And you'll see this, uh, which is another issue. Uh, we won't even go over here across the street, this is all solid waste. That gets brought in and recycled here and put on our farm fields, this is the issue we have, now let's go over here to the left side of this property. And look at that fine establishment.
So you're up by Centerville?
This is, yes, Centerville, uh.
In Ridge Road.
South of In Ridge.
Got it.
Across from some prominent, uh.
Oh, I didn't.
Uh, rich and community around here. Um, right now, there is two illegal trailers, one is right about here. Uh, and one is back here, it might be on the parcel below, uh, they were brought into the county legally without a placement permit. Um, and are on the property. Um, here it is. Trailer number one.
Well, but, 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 are you looking at something different?
It should be shared.
No, no, can you share that screen?
So I have to go back to that somehow.
So your screen sharing, go up there?
Yeah.
Click new share, and then you need to share your screen.
I didn't got to do screen sharing before.
Okay, and that should.
So there's your single line. Uh, if you look closely, you'll see this is all metal siding, uh, rubber roof, uh, pretty much depicts late nineteen seventies. And if I had the other picture, you'd see where the roof goes.
And there's no placement permit.
Uh, what's that?
Is there a placement?
No, 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 uh, here you'll see the windows broken out of it, uh, it's a fine establishment. And this is what the people of Centerville are tired of. Uh, and you can see the other.
Is it being lived in, or is it just?
No, no, it's just waiting for its permit to be put in place.
So there's no placement permit yet, but they may be applying for one, have you talked?
I believe, I believe they have applied for one, how much to pose that as a picture? Uh, the other one, I think, shows the other one back at the back of the property. Um, this is a document I got from Lynn earlier today that tells you what years of used trailers have been moved in, and whatnot over the previous years, like she's, like you guys requested the information. Um, and that's essentially where we are with that part of them. Um, and I would normally just kind of wait for the board to move along and do what it wants to do and whatnot, but as I've been waiting on potable order for many months. And those down there.
What is that, thirty to four years stand up previously?
I don't know exactly, and then we have plenty of time to get into this. But at this point, I would like to make a motion that we enact a moratorium on the issuance of placement permits for used manufactured slash mobile homes older than ten years old on the date of installation. This moratorium only pertains to used manufactured mobile homes placed outside of established manufactured mobile home parks as per RCW thirty five dot twenty one dot six eight. So I'm asking for a moratorium while we go through all this work to potentially clean up a problem we have.
Okay. Okay, I will second the motion so that we may have discussion, thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second, discussion. So, thank you for all the work, and, and thank you to Lynn for all the work she's done. This is, this is a good start. For me, a moratorium is an emergency. It is something that usually has to deal with life security, something very, very serious. I don't know if by passing a moratorium, it will stop old used manufactured homes from showing up. And the reason is, is because if there's a moratorium, people will just bring them, set them there, and wait for the moratorium to expire.
You have to have a placement permit by law to bring them on the property, per county regulation.
Yeah, and how many people have placement permits that haven't done it already, so are you actually gonna stop, see what I'm saying there? Because when it comes up and it's free, you're gonna go get it, and you're gonna bring it on your farm or ranch or wherever, and you're gonna set it there, and then you'll ask for your placement permit, you're gonna, you're not gonna walk away from. There are, I mean, nineteen seventy six is getting pretty old, but two of them are nineteen seventy six or older in twenty twenty one, one was in twenty twenty, and one in twenty nineteen. Are people currently living in those, the people that are living there, are they just renting it, are they, uh, working for one of the farmers, is this temporary housing? What exactly is this? I need to know those things before I can vote to stop it from happening, I mean, if, if that is what ineffective is affordable housing in Clickidah County, God forbid if I ever voted against affordable housing in Clickidah County. I'm one hundred percent understand the frustration where people are coming from, I just need more information, and I don't know, it currently with, you know, the fact that there were two, one, four, four in the past.
I was hoping that the names of the applicants was actually on this data, that it might explain more.
Well, I, it does, for me, the names of the applicants doesn't matter.
If you saw it was habitually the same people, is my point.
Okay, um, this still wouldn't matter to me, because I'm, I have to look at the entire county, right? And I have to think about the entire county and all the constituents. Kind of like, you know, we try not to make decisions based on who the situation is.
I would agree, because I would feel the same way if somebody was bringing in forty year old, fifty year old trailers and white salmon as well.
Right. And I don't know about ten years, ten years is a arbitrary number, I need to know if there were changes in fire code, why, why a ten year test? It can't be supported, can we be, you know?
Other counties have five, I chose ten, because it keeps it at least semi-current with energy efficiencies, that us being a nice, wonderful green county that we are, we should care about energy efficiency.
Is your thought on the moratorium, is that, are you concerned if we go through, you know, a typical process that we would to change the, um, that there's gonna be some rush, folks are gonna move a bunch of these in, or is?
I, I think you're gonna continue getting them while you, um, or continue to allow people to break the law, while you take nine months or longer to discuss, but what, I mean trailers.
I, I mean.
Sometimes it needs, you need to take nine months to.
If, if we were actually in the planning and debating and, uh, info- information gathering and all of that, I mean, going back to the other subject. Uh, I can fully understand and all of that, but we are no farther today than we were nine months. That's just a roadblock. I don't know that this will get the roadblock. But, um, it is absolutely imperative to residents of Centerville that I represent, so it is absolutely imperative to me.
First off, I have this decision fatigue today.
I understand.
Um. Um, I'm not, I think it will be difficult for me to support the motion as it's today, uh, but that doesn't mean I don't really have a big issue with any of this, honestly, I think we, I do, as far as a morit, I would rather, um, I don't, I don't like moratoriums either, I, I, I think if, I think we can move fairly swiftly if we're all on the same page, as far as the, I don't think there needs to be a big deal about.
If we had something that said, now like these, I understand these were placed illegally. Um, and flip your nose to the current law and code. And I understand somebody has to be the last one to get a placement permit.
Right.
So I can fully understand, uh, grandfathering, uh, to some degree. But now that this is a topic of conversation, I do not put it past some people to buy everyone in the free world and move it on to the property, so that they can move it to another property later. Uh, in their grandfather name, so I, I, as this is starting to become public knowledge, I want to make sure there's some safeguard in place that they're not gonna just bring twenty of them up here, uh, with two thousand bucks a pop, uh, and stick them all over their property that is located all over the central alley.
What are they, are, are most of them being lived in, if you know? I think, they can, are they, what, what are these things being?
I don't know all of them, uh, I've betted a few out at, uh, Starvation Ridge, uh, in the hill. Um, and they, you have to be careful that it falls to the floor. They're used as registration trailers and whatnot on those properties, I don't know what they're used for on the other property. Yeah, I'm probably saying too much already, I don't.
No, 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 I just, I, I do see that Director Ward is on the Zoom call, I, I had a technical question, if, if you're available.
She's probably going, no, no.
No, no, no. No, no, no. I'm curious, when we're, we're making it, or at least I'm making an assumption that it is illegal. To put, to have a single Y or an old manufactured home parked on your place if it's just sitting there. Is that, is that true or? Does do.
Well, I'm supposed to bring it onto site until you've had a permit issued.
That was in the documents I presented last week. You can't bring it into the county until you have a placement permit issued.
You're supposed to obtain your permit first.
Right, but is the permit, I guess what I'm, the question I'm asking are, do those structures have potentially other uses than other for habitation? Which I need a permit for. Are there, if there is, is there any other legal use of an old manufactured home besides habitation?
They can.
It would have to be decommissioned through Labor and Industries. But when Labor and Industries decommissions it, then it has to fall under the building code. And to use it for any other use, whether it's a house or storage, it's gonna have to get engineering to say how it will meet building code.
Okay.
And to answer your.
No, the answer is no. The only way to qualify as a fifty year old, right?
Yeah, and you had the other question when I said the three to four year span. For new, that's kind of like, um, buying a car, like if I get it in two thousand and nineteen, I might be getting. A two thousand and eighteen at the end of the season, I might be getting a two thousand and nineteen, or I might be getting next year's first of the two thousand and twenties.
It's still on the car lot as new, even though it's two years old.
Correct, yeah, that's kind of the same thing that we see happen.
I guess I would say I have multiple concerns from energy efficiency to structure, uh, snow load capabilities. To encouraging, um, because when you look at these, you don't see the siding on the bottom, you don't see permanent foundation. You, you, you find multiple, um, steps and decks not attached, not permitted, you're, I'm just showing you three others there. You start to create an ongoing issue of nuisance compliance problems. That are around it, you can call it hut housing, or you can call it affordable housing, or you can call it slumlord, or you can call it whatever you want. But, yeah, no, people in Centerville essentially are very angry. Said in my main worry with the reason for the moratorium is, is I feel that it's very potential that at least. One entity could bring a bunch of these and load them up just so their grandpa. Even though first one of them is a violation.
First of all, if they just bring them in and load them up, uh, they are gonna be illegal, so you don't, that's a whole different thing. We don't gotta worry about that. There's no grandfathering of that, okay? If they applied for a bunch of placement permits all at the same time and they were issued, then they would be grandfathered, so. That being the case, I'm, I'm not. Super overly concerned. I do think it would be a good idea, this conversation, and I, I would, I'm, I'm not in favor of the motion because it doesn't hit the level of moratorium for me.
So how about if I do this? How about if I rescind my motion for a moratorium? While we try to work through this in an expedited fashion, knowing that I might, uh, make the motion again at a future date, but for now I'll hold it off.
Be okay with that second?
Um, sure, then I will rescind my motion. Okay.
And I would make a commitment that, like I said, I think we can get there. Right away. I don't have an issue. I do have an issue that I was, I was waffling a little bit on the moratorium. Now that the motion's off the table, it doesn't matter.
Well, I knew that because you were taking my answer.
The, because I do have concern about if you're, if you're gonna, you're gonna warn everybody that you're gonna take action, you may take action, but then. Yeah, there, basically, we've heard there is no legal purpose for these except. Uh, and you have to get a placement permit, so you can't move ten of them in and stack them up and get placement.
Well, you're not gonna make twenty exemptions tomorrow or next month or next.
No, no.
I'm holding you that you won't.
No.
And, um, this one might end up getting permitted based on how fast.
Right. Well, once they submit, and once they submit the application.
They got every other thing.
That there is a, you, you know, that is, you know, land use, land use process, somebody has to be the last.
And I'm okay with that loan this week or in the future.
Right, okay. Okay, okay, you got something else? All right.
Um, the, the schedule that they said we had, uh, radio on the sixteenth, is that correct? Our calendar says it's next week.
Oh, the schedule said, I didn't look, but yeah, what?
Our agenda said it was this week.
Yeah.
Our schedule says it's next week, so I want part of it, so I know this phone call.
Oh, let me go, I'm, let me check that.
That's a good one. I just, I went by the agenda.
I should have run it up at the beginning. Somehow I got signed onto the criminal justice treatment account panel for twenty twenty one. And so I've been facilitating that and organizing those meetings, not thinking you guys have an objection, but I wanted to bring that up. I was curious if we had an official county policy on surplus property. I'm sure we do, but I couldn't find it. So I was hoping somebody.
We should have some guidance.
It might be forty years old.
A lot of that, it's actually in your capital. Yes.
The only thing else I have is I would like, uh, the board. Uh, to see if you guys would be interested in potentially reaching out to Representative Mossbrucker. To discuss the solar tax depreciation rates to give her enough heads up to possibly present some kind of litigation or, sorry, legislation in the future. I know, trying to rush, um, to get ahead of this and not wait till the last minute. If she's willing, are we willing to have her in here? Or a special meeting or a workshop or any of that kind of stuff, whatever.
Yeah, I would support. Good idea to, yes, reach out, and I think it would also be a good idea to have, uh, talk to David McClure about what he's seeing, um, at the.
Right, I'm thinking it would be a nice little workshop, Krista. All right, that's, uh, I believe that's all that's on my list. Thank you for your patience.
Go back in my other.
That's the only one of those that are actually deadlines.
So, yeah.
Oh, we still need to discuss whether anybody, um, besides myself wants to sign that one to the governor.
Casey? Oh, I'm sorry, did you, I'm sorry, I, I saw.
Forgot about her, I let her talk before.
Well, it's your turn.
So you have to make one more decision, though. I know you just stated that you don't.
No, answers no, then.
Um, so, um, Public Health just received a resignation for, uh, and so we're requesting verbal to advertise. For the environmental health technician position, um, it's not exempt, phrase thirty seven, they want to advertise one through three.
Yes.
Let me guess, I, uh, I don't know enough about their budget at this point in time and to figure out where their grant funding is and how many employees they have and whatnot. And I would prefer myself to wait until I have more pertinent details.
Is it in their budget?
Uh, yes, this has been a, um.
Mom's standing position.
It's the environmental health technician, uh, one of the positions underneath the environmental health.
All of the ones that are part of war. I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Is the current budget here?
I'm abstaining. So you have two yeses and a, and a.
Two's good enough.
Thank you.
Did most of that program?
Yeah, I just don't know enough.
Yeah.
About it, and we've got. And I also want to know more about why and how. Since we have a minute, I would like to thank our staff for being so awesome, been an otherwise difficult day. I was gonna say, you couldn't get a second on that, ladies, I don't know.
Well, you didn't make a motion.
I don't know if you want a response to it. When it's not recorded. Dan, where did you see the radio that was, um, today?
A blue sheet on the front of the agenda.
Yeah, it's in, it was on our thing, it was this Thursday, I believe. Yeah.
I need to double check in my emails, I can't really.
Because I was thinking, because I have a board of directors, and you started to eat, but I will, I will come in and do it if, yeah, there. That blue sheet, not this blue sheet.
Yes, it is on the calendar for the twenty third, so I will confirm.
You say it's usually the third Thursday. So. This one.
Could I get some further clarification on the PA opinion you want? I'm having a brain fatigue today.
Oh, uh, the legalities of a surplusing.
Thanks, sir.
Expired body armor and, um, protective chest plates to the general public.
Mr. Chairman, while you keep thinking about that, could we open public comment?
Sure.
We'll start with fifteen minutes. If anybody wants to, if not, then we'll move on. It doesn't have to be open for fifteen minutes. Anybody's out there that wants to speak. Yeah, and they get their usual three minutes. Yes, this, um, yeah, so I guess we will open for public comment, although we had lots of public comments earlier. If there's anybody, uh, in on, there's nobody in chambers, so if there's anybody in Zoom land that wishes to provide public comment, uh, this is your opportunity.
They did, um, leave a packet that we did not accept. We're gonna help take that on to you there.
Are we, do we have somebody? Not that I'm seeing. Um, I will note for the record that Diana, I think it's Diana, I received your email. Yes.
Assuming they go with that petition.
Uh, yeah, it's a new stack, but I told them. That we don't know how legal our process was, if they cared, I would leave them sitting there, we would take them in as testimony next week.
Dave, do you wanna?
There's no difference which we.
Well, I'm not, it's. I don't really have. Some of the, some of the statements in here are. Kind of subjective. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I don't. I mean, I mean, this was some, I mean, you're, you're obviously fine with it. I'm not super, I don't, I don't know.
I don't like getting into political statements.
Um, right, and that's the part of having trouble, like I don't have any problem with, you know, the emergency's been going on, it's wearing on us, it's been five hundred and fifty days. I do have a. The, it feels like the only reason, okay, there's the trigger, it feels like, that doesn't sound like, uh, that sounds like a subjective statement. But the only reason to do this is because the executive branch for Obama continues making decisions without the input of legislators, local elected officials and communities. You know, there was a legislative session that has taken place during this emergency and.
And I've argued the fact that those legislatures are the ones that gave him the power.
That gave him the power and they could have, so to say, that they didn't have enough, they did have an opportunity. I can say local elected officials and communities, absolutely. I, we, you know, I, like, I would be fine with, you know, input from local elected officials and communities, but I don't want to get into wordsmithing, that would make me more comfortable. You know, there's nothing, no problem, we all want what, what's best for our communities and state, but the perception is only one mere person is making all the decisions. I can, I can agree with that, that there's certainly that perception. As far as we can tell, there's no public plan for ending the state of emergency. I don't. It feels like that, but I, I, I mean. Be part of the solution, the lack of hope. Yeah. I'm not sure what the point of, the vaccines are not proven to be a hundred percent effective, and by mandating them, you're feeling the frustration. And anger, I agree with that, by mandating them, you are feeling the frustration and anger many are feeling, absolutely. And they're not a hundred percent effective, but I'm not sure what. Yeah, actually, I could do that.
And then we wouldn't be sending it as, as their document.
Nope, it's our own.
Dave, you have a problem with the question of public meeting?
Um, I think it's, other, other than, I think it's window dressing. I think it is, there's not a chance at all that it's gonna actually happen, and so we're only, it's, it's like. You know, it's like me sending a thing and demanding a, uh, in-person meeting with the president. I can certainly make that debate. And requesting a response, or maybe we could say, we request a timely response, but setting a date, you know how we feel when people do that to us as far as like. I want a response by this, it's like.
But this doesn't start with I'm your boss, which is what those usually say.
Right. You good, you good with that, Dan?
Um, I, I said, I prefer to sign it the way it is, but in the fairness of, uh, teamwork. I'm fine with her deleting those sentences and bringing it back for us to sign it.
Okay.
We will have to send it ourselves, I guess.
Commissioners, if you are in agreement, could you at least make a note that you are in agreement? And I'll have this ready for you Thursday, well, if you don't have it Thursday, never mind.
Um, do you want to motion?
We usually don't.
If you're agreeing.
If it's a letter, we don't need a motion. We're fine, good, okay. Same thing else, um, we didn't close public comment. Oh, all right. Not seen anymore, three folks on there. Um, I will close public comment period. And, um, I tried, I did send a text to the prosecuting attorney, but I, I did not. Right, okay, so I guess we will, we will defer on that.
Are we gonna continue, um, or announce an open public meeting for later today?
So I, I think, um, I'd like the record to show that, um. There were constituents who showed up that did not, uh, follow the mask mandating. And there were many of them who were very frustrated and upset about what things are going on. That the, the chairman removed himself, um, per our agreement. Of kind of what we were willing to do, and I just wanted the record to show that, um, due to the situation with public safety. I personally decided to stay and listen and, um, let them air their grievances. Um, and I also want the record to show that the, um, the Zoom was inadvertently shut down, uh, the. Staff was not in presence to, to reopen it, uh, but, uh, two commissioners were in, uh, chambers. Uh, no decisions were made, no county business. Uh, no decisions were made, no county business was conducted, uh, no promises were given, uh, but I stayed because I thought that. It was the best decision for the county to let these very upset people listen, um, and at the end.
The interest of public.
Yeah, absolutely. And, um. It was a lot better than having to push a button.
Or the button, because we tried to push, but wasn't there. Yes, right there, no, no.
What?
Did we ask the button while we was here? Said no.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, in the interest of public safety, we felt it was best. To stop a potential problem.
And I, I apologize to, uh, the chairman for not, um, following his lead and removing myself. But sometimes the best thing you can do is to let people vent, um, in a safe space, um, rather than what it could have become.
You could have done that, so I'll do that. Yeah, well.
With that being said, I know that there is a reporting of the entire thing that will be posted online. Um, and if we get a copy of that, I, um, would not mind having that posted on the website, so we are very clear and transparent. For all those, that was in attendance, um, and let it be shown that, um. And I said at the end of it, that, uh, you have to show respect, and, and I wore my mask the entire time through it. Except for when it falls down, and, um, but if we have that again, I will follow the chairman's, uh, lead and remove myself and conduct the meeting online. I hope that we averted, um, that happening again. Um, and while as, as easy as it would be to state, we will just do online public meetings from here on out. Um, at this moment, I don't feel that's necessary, if that happens again, I will change my life, I promise.
I did tell them that I am more than willing to come to their gal, gal, gatherings. To hear the event, if they can keep from doing that in our chambers again, and possibly disrupting government. And official business, it has to be the official times, official days, and, uh, they seem civil and agreed to those terms, so I, I'm very hopeful that it doesn't happen again on a Tuesday. Well, if you wanted to. You state for the record that this would, meeting could be continued, um, at the next event, tonight, it's, it's. Have the warning, legal. Because I think you can hold it, um, or announce an emergency public meeting because of the civil hostilities.
Um, I, I would not anticipate, I would certainly hope that, um. If, um, a quorum of the board is present at any other meetings, um, that they would not be conducting any county business. That, that, just because there, I mean, we can announce that we may be, there may be, may be an attendance at the same event. But that does not mean it's a county meeting that we're gonna conduct business. Uh, partly because, I mean, at least for myself, um. Uh, an event, if we're at an event, that's not our event, that is somebody else's event, and they are responsible for. Ensuring, um, compliance or non-compliant with the, whatever rules that the event sets out, those, those don't fall to us, if it's a. If the board is meeting, it's a public meeting.
Right, well.
And the open public meetings.
Before today, I didn't picture anyone speaking to the crowd, other than you, but after today, if one of us are asked a question. Uh, it would be nice to give an answer that isn't, sorry, I can't give you an answer, because it'd be violation, that would be exact. That's what I'm trying to steer away from.
Right, well, my suggestion is if you feel like that's gonna be, uh, issue, you should not attend. Because that was, because again, if, if we are answering questions and interacting with each other in attendance, a quorum of it, it's a public meeting.
Right.
Which we need to keep minutes, we need to keep, it's open to the public, we didn't, we didn't, um.
Was not noted.
Was not noticed, that's not.
For the emergency notification now.
It doesn't count now, it needs twenty-four hours.
Yeah, even you, under any certain, yeah, you need twenty-four hours.
I don't worry that.
Yeah, I believe, that sounds right.
Yes.
So, Jake, your answer's no.
No, I.
Wanted the continuation of the open meeting.
No, I just wanted it noted that we would all be in attendance, that we would not be conducting business.
That's right.
Just like we go out to lunch all the time, but we don't conduct business.
Right.
Same, same thing, same thing.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm fine with, I mean, it's. It could be on the record.
If somebody talks to a person, I can talk to them, I just can't answer the crowd, exactly. Good, are we ready for a motion?
One, one quickie.
Oh, we do have to sign that document, so.
I did notice too, that we, we had on here about, that you would be participating in the union negotiations.
Right.
That was removed from the calendar, so that's off.
You can find out the radio, just let us know.
I should want, I will look to get done.
Okay.
Are we signing this document before we leave today?
Sign.
Yeah. Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
Longest day ever is about to end, I'm making a motion during this meeting.
Second. The motion for second to the during the regular meeting, we have no workshops scheduled, um. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, we're adjourned.